One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local.
Trustee Bellower?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Administrator, any updates?
Done this evening.
Fiscal Officer?
Yes, I have not had an opportunity to check my email, but I had emailed you all about the the educational banquet in October for the Butler County Township Association, and I would like to send in the RSVP and the check at the same time, at this point. I know Lori is going.
I sent my check in already.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Normally, the township pays for the elected official or the administrator to go, and then if you have a guest, you have to pay for the guest because we won't pay for them. So you're, so Dave is going, but you're already paid?
Yes.
Okay, and do you know if you're going, Russ or Keith?
Well, I'll let you know this week.
That'd be great, because I'd like to send in one check, so.
Ten sixteen?
Yes, and it is at Cafe Lee on the campus of Butler Tech, and I will say that the food has been outstanding the several years that they had it there. And the speaker for the evening is on artificial intelligence, so it's, it should be a good, a good speaker. Okay. But yes, sooner rather than later, same for you Keith, if you could let me know. And if you're gonna bring a guest, just let me know, that way I can reiterate that to Bruce. Thank you.
Hi, discussion items. Mr. Dan Dieters of Emergency Alliance Incorporated, do residential solid waste recycling cost containment reduction consulting services. Better than any process.
I'll be quick. Thank you for allowing us to help you out with this. We have run a couple of these RFPs in the past. We're here to help you do it. I've looked high and low to see if there was any way around doing it and trying to negotiate. It just doesn't seem like there is at this point. At this point, the timetable we're looking at is end of October. We should have the RFP finished along with the input from administration. We would like to publish it on the fourth November. If the bid's due by the fourth of December. Try to work through a contract after we select a vendor mid-December, and by January one, kind of have it wrapped up. The current contract will start on April one of next year. That gives us a bunch of time. There's, there's what the RFP is, and there's kind of the reality of the situation. Sometimes we don't get anybody to respond, but Rumpkey Group, sometimes Best Way will do it. We have not seen anything from Republic times we've done it. Base management or any other. If they have to end up dumping it here anyway. Well, we will happy to assist you work through that. If there's any questions, I'm happy to.
Do you find that when you negotiate those prices, the residents get a better deal?
Well, the good thing about us taking a look at that is we see everybody's price. Kind of help you push it along. What ended up happening, what ended up happening last time is we can help control the fuel surcharges a little bit better than, than having a, not, than not having a solid waste district. Keep an eye on it a little bit better as to when those prices will go up and give you some kind of of that, and in other, we, we do do a little bit more in some other town, in another township where we have a, have a larger role in that. I understand that that's probably not going to be one here, so that's okay. The RFP, help you choose it and get you the best deal. The, the biggest thing about this stuff is making sure that you're priced correctly in the market. I mean, your place is right here. You know, it's, it's the fact that, the fact that a couple of years ago, when they went through, there was some indication that it would be expensive for Ross. I, I, I don't get that. So we're, we'll, we'll sort through that, figure out what's what.
Yeah. Because I had people talking about the gas. I said, well, right now, you may be paying more gas with you than you are with Duke, but when it comes time for Duke to start raising the prices, you're all in.
He means the fuel surcharge for the truck to pick up stuff.
For the Rumpkey trucks.
You remember the same thing?
Yeah. I'm happy to talk about the gas electric program, though I know those like a little bit.
Well, a, as it relates to that, sometimes we get pushback from people, and they'll say, why is the township controlling what the residents pay, pay for it? Why can't we just pay it ourselves? Which I guess if we don't do this, they can.
You get whatever Duke.
That's, that's, you know, they get with, not just Duke, but, you know, Rumpkey or whomever.
This is the same, this is essentially the same.
Right, and so they get, they get what they get.
People thought in chat.
Right.
You know, and it makes, you know, it makes them do a little bit of work business, too.
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot of times, these things are so big, most, most of these vendors just toss it in.
Can we look at what your, what the bid was, did you do this last time?
Yes.
Okay. Can we look at what the charges would be now, had it not been for this, this program, to what it was, to, to say, yeah, you did save money?
Well, you can't really, you can't, that's hard to do. Here's why. The fuel surcharges are on Rumpkey, and they could, they could do whatever they want.
Yeah.
So this contract will control however that goes.
Okay.
So there are townships out there that go direct, that do not have solid waste districts, but they'll have, you know, Best Way or somebody else picking up at some homes, if those people, those folks decide to shop it. Like some people decide to shop the gas and electric aggregation program. You know, our programs there are designed to allow you to go shop if you want. These pro, this, you can't do it in the solid waste you're in.
Okay.
So, but as far as the, when people talk about the gas and electric stuff, okay, why the trustees helping this? If you don't do it, you're in the other government program run by the PUCO, and I would like for you to be able to walk into a PUCO meeting and talk to somebody. There's no, it's, it's, they set the price. Utility sets the price at what they paid for. So this is, this is just another way that you can maybe help folks get some of these costs, you know, under, you know, some sort of control. Because when, when you're an independent, I'm an independent customer of Rumpkey myself. Yeah, I'm out in Blue Ash, we don't have anything like. I get a letter, your price is going up. That's it. You know, that, that, I don't even think I get a letter, I get a notice. I don't even get the courtesy of a sixty cent stamp per hour, which it costs in a first stand.
Part of the idea is you're, you're kind of locking in a rate.
Yeah, you would, and, and you hold, there's, there's a couple of things. You're, you're locking in the rate for five years, you're locking in the surcharges for five years. There are escalators if like gas goes off the charts. Those things are kind of locked in, and then we do a couple of other things on our contracts. They, they sometimes won't allow you to shut off service for more than like thirty days or sixty days in some areas. In our contracts, we put one you can shut their service off if you move, if you go to Florida for the winter those days. You know, if you're, if you have a place in Ross, and you have a place, you know, somewhere in Florida or somewhere, anywhere else. There's, there's a, there's a, that was always the big, that was a big, you know, whole, that was, that was a big deal for a lot of people in some of the community. They had other, they were down in Norris or something. They just, they just wanted to be able to turn it off, but they're paying for a service that they want.
As a resident, if you're paying for service somewhere else, like I pay for dumpster service, my business, which is in Norwood. Can you, can I opt out of it here with a letter saying my trash will be taken to Norwood?
I believe that there is a knockdown opportunity. I have to look that up, because I, I don't want to give you false information right now, because I, the laws change every other year on that, you know, things, and I don't, I have not read anything about the opt-out stuff yet. I'll probably get to it this week.
Okay, if you could let us know, that may not affect a whole lot of people, but it, I'd like, I'd like to know the answer, and it does affect me.
Yeah, at least, you want to know the answer if somebody asks you a question.
Yeah. Okay. So what do you think it's going to, you know, come in at? Your rest fee, what are we still paying right now, fifty-seven dollars a three months?
It's, it should be, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing nineteen bucks around a lot of places, so, you know, I don't, oh, maybe we can negotiate it further down. But it'll be you to decide once we.
Got a question?
Yeah, I have none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dieters. All right, move on to safety modifications administration building and police. Aren't our ramps sitting up? Everyone's escalators now?
I don't think it has anything, it's actually kind of stressful, I don't think it has to do with y'all not getting shot while you're sitting up here.
Oh.
Safety.
Safety.
Chief, you want to talk about a little of that?
Uh, yeah, you know, I still working on the budget and stuff, but I, I think we need to do something just in light of the current craziness that's going on around the world, and just looking at, put harm, maybe just dealing with the risk management also. So lighting in the back parking lot has not existed, so I think we need to look possibly getting some LEDs around the corners of the building. So we're, we are secured up here, but for the people during the daytime, I don't know what the cost would be for this. You can, you can, and I don't want the township building feel like it's a off limits to people. A lot of people feel like they can kind of same time, they have a duty to protect the people inside this building. There was some people, so making sure, we've got a couple of doors here that I'm very confident in that need to be looked at.
Which one?
Um, there's one back here. I want to double check with the Norris, or if we don't put a door that maybe we don't really, I know they have a keypad to that, but there's also a door that is at night time. I'd like to secure that a little bit better and see if we can't code that or put some type of locking mechanism on it. Because I just, I think that side of the building is our vulnerable. Right here, at least it's, it's lit. Our officers can see when they're pulling in. Back there, when I drive by it every night, I'm like, if someone was back here, I you wouldn't know. That's our, our weak spot that I think we need to secure up a little bit. And then whether we do a it's more a risk management, but I also would like to put it up so that if there's not an ultrasound station, that people in this building could see the outside of the building. There's our nighttime ladies that work for us. Whether we put a server-based, you know, camera system up that, that has the ability to record this lot, and at least put some monitors up for our people to be able to see that if they saw somebody walking in the parking lot, in an ambush type situation, maybe they're, they're prepared, or maybe we keep wind of it and, you know, can see if someone was planning something. Attack on um, out there in Utah, that was pre-planned for at least a week. So that means site visits. That means seeing somebody come here, look at the police department, they were going to try to formulate something like that. I, I think those type of things we need to address coming year. And I don't think they're going to be especially expensive. And something like blowing this off, making smaller windows, that's really going to be something, or a wall here that's going to not really deter anybody, it's just going to slow them down, so we have time to take, take some type of action to evacuate or take an offensive position if we have to, or secure different things. That's going to be a little bit more costly, but.
At a safe room.
That too. I mean, we can, we can put a door down there in the dungeon, you know. For me, it's, it's really more about, let's light this up so people can see. Let's get some security cameras in place. Let's secure a couple more of these doors that I don't feel are they're just a little bit older, they're not really, just look at them, and I go, we can decide, what do we want to do out here? Kind of decide. Again, I don't want to make it a prison, but at the same time, if do something here to, we can't necessarily track movements in here. I, I think need to address that here, with the crazy times. That's my initial brief thought.
Cameras aren't that expensive. Somebody could just put them around their house. I don't, my dollars are like and the res, the resolution of these fantastic.
My, my question is, would we be able to have multiple people who can monitor? Because there are times when I'm here alone, Michaela's here alone, Lori's here alone. If we have to get up to go look at a monitor, that's one thing. We almost have to come face to face to the door before we go, oh, I don't want to let you in. Be awesome if we had some kind of buzzer system from several places throughout the building. How can we, and it would be awesome if Michaela could talk to the people down at the PD without having to go down there. I mean, there are times when it might not be in her best interest to do so.
Yeah, we've got, I've got a system that I'm using for both of the, so that I can look on the cameras at all times. Not that, I don't really think anybody wants to do like a ring alert where
Right.
you're going to be getting that in the middle of the night, but at least officers could log in, and we could set that up. Not very expensive. I could, I could price that out and find someone who's willing to do it. The, the bigger thing is going to be Mr. Bellower was the only one who could tell me that those lights actually turned on at one point in time. So I don't think they've been on since two thousand and sixteen, and if we're going to light these up, I think we need to do, we need to get an electrician in here and do some LED. So it's, it's the best cost for a taxpayer, and the lights are going to last a lot longer. It's just, I think some little things like that that we could do that need to be done.
And, and for the, for the back part, I'd like take into consideration light pollution. As you said, right now, those vapor lights back there are show cars. It's lit up like daytime when they're on. It's that the takers could show cars. We're looking for security lighting, which would be low level, not lighting up the sky, not lighting up our neighbors' living rooms counter back of, so yeah. Just aim down, but a low level like that, if somebody is back there low crawling, or you can see it, then somebody goes back there, falls down, or falls over, something, then get a workman's comp claim.
Yep.
That's parking lots. That's a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So it's called an ultra wide. I'll talk to them about that. That's kind of what I know. But that's twenty-five feet up. Pretty dang clear.
Yeah. It would just, would be nice to be able to answer a good door.
And you break it in the van.
Wait.
I can.
I got a question. So you think you
I'll consult with them, and I can buy the equipment, so.
Just want to work. I think they talked about that. Give it a nice one.
And then he can help.
Yeah, I think based on like a five thousand square foot building. So I, I think if we haven't set the entrances where people have to make the entry, and then, you know, push to the corners of the building. I'm not even suggesting using those lights back there, because that might be too far away, and it might flood out the neighbors, which I'm not trying to do. Maybe we put them on the building, feeding down, so we just have that this section and the back section covers, so that if someone is back there, then, you know, camera camera using.
And because we probably got conduit, I think there's an exit sign. Problem with electric off that front.
Yep.
I know, I know a guy, I'll didn't have a lot in around the shop.
What do you think about having the police, when your officers, when they come in, go in there around back? Come in that back entrance and straight in here, rather than opening this up and opening up the entire I don't know if you'll say, you know, the police department or the garage bay. And the peo- people could actually, you can put signs up and say, hey, this is the secured area, or you're not allowed back here. That, that fence. Um, we can do a gate, a gate operator, whatever.
Yeah, we would also have to get garage door, um, open over on that back.
Yeah.
So we'll only have it on the front.
Because I don't, I, I see, I pulled up this morning, and I ever drives two eighteen. It was right, but it was sitting there wide open, and the garage door was wider. And I thought, eh, you know, if I was, you know, the running bad guy.
But this is our most, only, you know, the only time that that comes into issue is we have, you know, SWAT team force doing their training back.
Yeah. I, I understand, but, but as a, as a rule, if they're having to pull around there, then there's not activity out here where people congregate or act.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to anything that is just a tactical advantage.
Right.
Safety aspect of it.
Yeah, and your cars aren't out here.
Yep.
They're back.
Yeah, so two eighteen, they haven't been to K nine, so I didn't pull the garage. You can't let it run inside.
Yeah.
With all the key.
But from a safety standpoint, I think if they're pulling around in or around back, then there's no cop car sitting around for it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I'm
Hey. You're on. Do we have a whole rule? Well, we were, there may be some more things on these, on, on this, this one thing here. Tom, do you want to explain some of the things you have on here? You're the one who put this together, right? Okay. Just let him explain what he's talking about. He's the one who put this, this proposal together.
Tom, I agree, thirty twenty-three, Rock and Go Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to expand on this. I saw it was in the package for the trustees. Think the trustees have been good stewards of the property that's here, but still a car parking lot. My thoughts first of all is to make it inviting to the community, but to set, use this building to set the example for what we want perhaps in the old Bay District, and make it more accessible to to our I'll start from top and just break down to some of my thoughts. It's not going to be the permanent home, but we may be here for another ten years or so. But we need to focus on where you plan this, this facility. Start with the signage upfront. Think building and nationality of teeth that the park is our general gated, they both have monument signs over the ground. The signage, I may be wrong, that's here, the sign posts are exactly what tractors are here, except we changed the handles in. So this sign here, and then down here for the used car. Monument signs, bring those down. If you come into this building, generally you'll bend down here, because all the parking is slotted that way. Driveway this end, I guess the north end, looks very close to the driveway exit for the bank, and you have to be previous bend. You're crossing intersection, you're turning your turn signal on, you have to the intersection to get in. Make it wider. There's lots of parking here, not so much the it moves on those public entrance. We have a dedication plaque and stone at the police, what I call the police centers. I think if this becomes the main entrance, we should move the plaque and stone here, so more can appreciate it, and take the tree, make the landscape bed a little larger. It cannot be over the handicap accessible ramp. Only thankfully explained to me that that was a grant that allowed us to have that. That was probably not a cheap call. I'll have to reflect on one experience where it was snowing this past winter, and I came down here for some reason. Everything was scraped off clean, except the handicap. If it is a handicap ramp, should be proposed look. I thought, well, a canvas canopy or some canopy over there, I'd relook to that side. Would be helpful. The downside of this entrance is we have steps, no handrail, no lighting, and not accessible. So the only way to get in buildings, come up steps, well, without handrails. At least here, we have handrails. So can make this a primary entrance. Like the chief said, and I was certainly not aware of parking in this building. Everybody parks with police come and go. Think designating that as a decent place, this is a public entrance down some of that traffic. And another monument sign saying police department. And some interior design things I think you should and I'd come, and the sign here is go to that door. Press a ring, then somebody comes to the door and lets you in. I just am not familiar with any other administration building in which you have to have someone led you in the building. Then then you have access to the whole place. The police department is simply not secure from the inside. I have to tell you this, I've been in most, when I can think of this, county townships administration, obviously much better operation. Walk into the lobby, and if you want to get into the planning office, police department or zoning, go into separate doors, have that flexibility. Also have, your police department is absolutely wide open. Now. Always been treated with courtesy and respect when I come, so that's not an issue. Not everyone is going to be a happy camper when they, and if have disruption there at the door, and it's open, that, that no way to protect anybody. You know, you can sit on that soup box all day long, I think we're just waiting for something to happen. I could be here forever, but I think we need to this apartment, and make this an available entrance. Cameras, somebody can come into the building. Hey, takes an interior configuration. Don't have a receptionist outside, but if, if you came into the building, put this side, you have one, two, three doors, it's like I can knock on all the doors and figure out, there's no signage here to say administrative office, public office. So you have to be able to get somebody with some ability to move. Obviously, this is our median. It's not just a lobby. Can't change that, but I think we need to think very hard, very clearly if that can make. I read you something before. Don't take money. But I think get people to listen, cover the the walkway, make it the primary entrance, security and make it look like an administration building. Ever thought about basking windows? It'd be expensive, but I think we can lower the signs, so it looks less like a model.
So be more proactive than reactive, because we don't want something to happen only here.
Because you don't look at all it now. Plus, there's something more. It's going to get tough out there. Whatever it takes. Architect places. I think something just that I think, getting that entrance, park towns, or your employees isolating the police department.
What does anybody think about closing that entrance off?
I'm not, I think, I can get some work. This is the highest risk area.
Yeah.
When gloves is in full swing, and you have to come out here doing two response, it's I, I back up in the parking lot, and I get nervous. I have cameras, and it takes me twenty minutes. So I, I, I think that would be a great idea, again. Cost of, and I agree with, with, but when he said a hundred percent that you should not, you have a greater access to any of our administrative people. You should not use any access to any of our administrative people. That's just not how this is designed. It would cost a lot of money. I'm not opposed to shutting that off when we go out the back door, and I'll tell people with, or whatever it is that can't park in this area, because this is how we get out. We have to have a betterized gate or something like that, uh, and then again, we have to secure that back area that's, yeah, we let me go. Not go out that door and be.
If we got rid of the doors and closed that off and just put a panel there, then that's no longer an entrance, or, you know. Somebody throws, that's true. What does anybody think about putting shrubbery across here so it's not so easy to see in here? I don't know if there, I don't know how far that goes out. There's some shrubbery there, but I.
Have you noticed with the shades down though, it just, you really can't see in like you used to be able to. It's very, we see out a lot easier than you can see in.
Park it here, or light it here and dark out there, you can see.
Well, that's true.
Put it at five or six o'clock when you guys are leaving.
Meeting nights.
So, we'll put that in our next couple of meetings and see what we can start coming up with. Any other discussion?
It's, it's all good, you know, good to think about and do something about it, because when it's too late, it's too late.
I've talked to the chief, I don't like his, his glass right there, really easy, you know, to see what, there could be a couple of them in there.
Frick him up.
Put him up.
I've had good fun. Put some bars up.
No, I, I agree. I, I think it's just, it's going to take some planning, somebody to lay it out, a good thing, you know, the cameras and the lighting is price. Sorry, I mean, I have a new wheelhouse for you all, but that's not. Say that out, but that, the best way, but it's going to be a lot more if something happens. The cost is going to be a lot more if we have, uh, it's. Parted, somebody who don't think.
Plus, you got about this much ground before you get payment.
Okay, what, what I was kind of thinking about, Don, was that this tree here has gotten pretty tall. If those were across the front, I'm not talking about a hedge, but you know, there's a, a tree, a little bit of open space, a tree.
But cause then you can hide behind it.
No? They're hiding behind it toward a traveled highway, but. And there's so much, I mean, realistically, there's so much glass here. You can grab one of them big rocks and chuck it, and they're in. But hearing that, you guys, if you guys heard that, if you guys heard that, then what is your plan?
Well, Lori and I have a way to get to the back of the building. Sergeant Little is stuck in his office. Now granted, he has a pretty vicious dog, and he's armed. So, he probably is a better escape route than the rest, but Lori and I from, she could leave out my office and we could go to the back. But we're trying to pen in.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
He's in charge of that now?
Well, he's retired.
But, yeah, but he's. I know.
And if, if you're looking for safer, my found sitting, sitting down in Norwood.
Yeah, I'll give you my card, I didn't reach out to me, I'm sure it's got.
Should come down. Sounds, sounds like a jail cell. I'm sure, I'm sure you've heard it a lot.
All right, moving on, limited home rules, I mean, the passive government, teaching protection. So. As, as mentioned before, there's thirty-two hundred and some trust, uh, townships in the state of Ohio, like thirty-three of them have home.
Yeah, there's thirteen hundred and eight townships. There's thirteen hundred and eight townships in Ohio.
I thought it was thirty-two.
No, I think that might be the number of trustees.
Oh, trustees. Five thousand or something like. Who would you? There are three of them still, not a whole lot, but that's one of your bigger ones, and they have more services for the people and they have revenue. And revenue, and what kind of services will be provided.
Um, the, the other question where we, we started to have, I guess, maybe a little bit of a hangup was legal counsel, um, law director. And whether someone could be that, kind of on a, I won't use the right term, but a retainer basis, whether that qualify, do you know?
Detective Dawn Frick about that, she said basically our relationship with her would remain the same. You would have, well, the board would have to appoint her as law director. There might need to be some minimal changes to the contract that we currently have with her. But it would still be built on a, as needed basis. She would not be required to attend.
Okay. But that was, I don't want to say the first hurdle, but that was, if that didn't work, then, then it was done.
How about the Butler County Township Association, getting all the township together and maybe having a lawyer that will represent all of us? We used to have one years ago, he, he took over everybody.
That would sound kind of like the prosecutor, but I don't know that you're going to get. If you exclude Westchester, Liberty, and Fairfield Township, because they have, they're already home room. You would have to get the remaining townships to want to agree, and Lemon is, has no reason to become a charter township.
Right.
Um, and there are others that may feel that there is no reason for them, so it sounds good on paper.
What is their thought? Why, why would they not want to? Did you get the question?
Why would they, what would they get as, as a benefit from it?
Okay. What would we get as a benefit?
That's the question that has to be answered. If we're not proactively welcoming development, why would we bother with us?
Thank you.
And it's, it's, I think it's some kind of an expense too, correct, other than, other than, um, retaining a lawyer for, for as law director?
I think that would be the biggest expense, right in center.
And I, I rarely do know where I stand on this for the fact that, again, what's, what's the cost of smart township, if any? And what would even make it, what would we have to gain, when it's out, help in, in any way, our three existing. Help us, our control over. On any township. We, we, we know we operate under the Ohio revised code for, um, junk motor vehicles and, um, uncapped properties. That allow a, form of this, allow a bigger picture of that.
I think unless we've got our own zoning, that is, oh, that's going to be the biggest hurdle on that particular issue. Is the, and as long as we're at the, at the mercy of the county for zoning, then what is the benefit of?
What is, we're, we're under four years when the township decided, no, they want it to stay. Other than, so, to be appropriate, anyway, to go ahead and revisit that issue. Say it in my perspective. Decide ideas this time.
I agree.
But as we're talking about.
It's up. Right, onward, anything else to the board?
Individuals who wish to address it, speak in the floor. Get your name and address for the record. Point should be made clearly and precisely. Uh, within the five minute limit, one person, I may not be you or another. Comments to be directed to the board with respect. Any responses from the board will be the same time. Anybody sign in yet?
No.
Moving on. Closing action. There being no further discussion before the board, for the adoption of motion number twenty-five dash one zero eight. To adjourn the, the work session, I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Our next meeting here is October the second, six P M. Here at the building. Thank you for your attention, and thank you, Tom, for your. Good luck.